All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Chrysler?
Yes.
Here.
Councilmember Schreiner?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Chrysler is...
Absent, all right. Mr. Chrysler had a surgery recently, right? So we wish him a speedy recovery. All right, please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item four, approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that was unanimous. Item five, approval of the minutes from June 15, 2017. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the minutes.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Okay, that was unanimous as well. Moving on to item six, committee reports. Economic development and tourism.
The committee has not met yet, and the reason is largely because we're waiting for the current crisis with getting the budget together and getting that behind us before we venture off into economic development right now. That doesn't mean things aren't happening, we've got some various things we're exploring, things that might possibly be happening here in Dunsmere. In far as tourism is concerned, one of the things that I'd like to bring up is a project that we're working on right now, just be very brief with this. It's been ongoing since last year, started off as first impressions. We're working with all the cities around the county, and we're coming up with what we're calling hometown hotspot, basically tours that can be used on cellphones, smartphones, and this will allow each of the cities to develop a set of layers that will allow somebody coming to visit to go on various types of tours, tours historic, places to go off and enjoy themselves, restaurants, all the other different things. And we're working on doing that, as I said, together with some support from the Ford Foundation and also from the Siskiyou County Economic Development Council. We'll be looking going forward at identifying people who have ideas for tours, who have information, I know we have some of it already on hand from the past, we'll be working off of that. But I just want to let people know that what we're going to be trying to do going forward with this project is to provide anybody who stops by in Dunsmere a chance to really know all the different things and ways they can enjoy themselves, places to spend their money, et cetera. So this is a project we'll be working on. That's all I've got as far as tourism right now.
Thank you, Bruce. Item B is the finance committee. The finance committee met yesterday. Got some notes here. Basically, we've had a series of meetings over the past month or so, couple of months, to develop our budget for '17, '18. The committee's been working with staff to work through a bunch of issues with the budget. Overall, I think the committee is really impressed with and has a lot of respect for the job that the city manager and the finance director has done to prepare the draft budgets that we've been reviewing and to help us incorporate feedback that we've given into the drafts that we've been seeing. It's not easy, we're starting out this year, we had a very good year last year, better than expected. We started last year thinking that we were going to have a deficit budget, and we ended up with a small surplus last year. This year, we're in the same boat, expecting to have a significant budget deficit, but we are working through it, and we've been able to make some significant cuts to spending. There are a multitude of reasons why we're in the situation we're in, and we can get into the specifics, but when we actually review the budget. Ultimately, the committee's been reviewing the drafts, asking questions, going line by line through every single fund, every single department, looking for ways to get us to a balanced budget. So as long as I've been on the city council, this is the most thorough process I've been involved with, with the finance committee and with the budgeting. So again, I really want to thank the finance director Pam and our new city manager for taking us through this process, and it's been a very good one. I know Mark wants to, when we do the budget next time, you know, start in a better place and earlier, having gone through mission and vision workshops with the council. Again, as we always say, the budget's a tool for implementing what the vision of the council is and the strategy. So now that we have our city manager in place, we'll be going through more of that sort of visioning process in the next six months or so, and then doing the budget earlier in the process next time. That being said, we did approve for the city manager to bring the budget, a draft budget, to the council at our next meeting, and so the council will be approving, hopefully approving that budget, if the committee has some recommendations for potential additional cuts and things like that, but it's something that is for the whole council to see at this point. So we're really happy with the process. Again, it's tight, very tight. We're trying to provide all the services that the citizens expect, given a tight budget situation. So that's where we're at. Anything else to add, Marty? Was that okay?
No, and I want to thank on my behalf too, working with Pam and Mark, they made us understand thoroughly every single line item on that budget, which was rather thick.
Yes.
And when there were changes, you know, the next meeting we had, the changes were there, and as a matter of fact, there was something that Pam and Mark implemented in breaking out, you know, certain funds and how they were going to be spent, which is going to be a big benefit to the citizens to see where the monies are going to be spent.
Absolutely.
So I thank you and Pam.
All right, moving on to the public facilities and services committee has not met, moving on to airport.
I'll cover that. The airport committee met last month, and we're going to meet again this Monday at 12 o'clock here. If it's too hot, we may have it over at City Hall, we'll post it on the front door. But at the last meeting, we had a draft pavement management plan that was brought...
Mark, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Is the speaker in the room working? Can everyone out there hear?
He's about in it.
You're okay?
How's that?
Yes, no? I think that's a little better, thank you.
Okay. So we had the consultant that's doing the pavement management plan bring the draft to the airport committee. It was impressive as to the work they've done already, we expect them to come back with a final version in August. There's some exciting news as far as the potential to possibly pave the airport out there, most likely in about a year and a half to two years. We're hoping to be able to do that at no cost to the city, so we're hoping to move forward with that. And we're going to have a meeting this Monday with the forestry service to talk about getting a forestry contract in place. There were some concerns from the committee before, so we're going to cover that this Monday. If anyone's interested, feel free to come.
All right, so Monday noon here for an airport committee meeting. All right. Emergency plan task force, no meetings on there. Veterans Memorial?
Nothing, nothing going right now.
Met since our last meeting, okay. Again, some of these committees are active throughout various times of the year, and some not so much. Moss Brae Trail gave a big update on our progress at the last meeting, we haven't met since the meeting, we're still in the process of doing the surveying work necessary to create a proposal for UP, so...
Yeah, they should be out today, surveying.
Oh, okay, great. Tom Hasselndt's group, great.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Couple of times I've run into people who are talking about this, and I'm trying to convey to them what's different about now. Since you guys have been working on it for a while, if you could summarize in a sentence or two the status now, why you think it's different than it was before, and why we should be hopeful, I think that would be helpful. Could you give me a couple of, give us a couple of thoughts on why you think it's better now than it ever was before?
I could do that. I'm a little hesitant, just because what's changed is the strategy, well, what's changed is the plan. The proposal that Tom Hasselndt created 20 years ago for the Moss Brae Trail would be an extension of the trail from Hedge Creek Falls to just south of Moss Brae Falls on the east side of the river, which is on private property. And so the effort has been to work with the property owner on that side of the river to get that trail constructed for many, many years. We're looking at the potential of a different trail option to safely get to the falls now, and that is what we needed to present to UP to see if that was even feasible. And so on our site visit on June 22, we met with their engineering staff, and the plan was basically well-received, but ultimately, it's going to come down to UP's real estate department to approve it. And so we are preparing a plan, a more detailed done, a plan with the surveying work that's now being done, to be able to put together a real concrete proposal... Oh, that was your phone? I thought you were whistling at me, too. To put together a proposal that could actually be accepted by UP's real estate department. So it's a major shift in strategy. That said, the east side trail, we're not abandoning the idea in any regard, really, but this is just in addition to that, and it's something that we can think, we can do for, we can do sooner and for a lot less money, and would help greatly eliminate or at least reduce the amount of people trespassing on the tracks getting to the falls. So that was more than a sentence, I know, but, and more than I generally would want to say publicly, but, and I'm only hesitant because we are still trying to negotiate with the property owner, and so I don't want to get us to a place where we're thinking we're going in a totally different direction, because we're not, this is something in addition to. But there has been a ton of progress, and the fact that we have a really good, open communication with UP right now, which hasn't always been there, I think, or it's just kind of waned, is really promising, so that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Moving on to the broadband initiative. I'll be attending the Gigabit Cities Conference at no cost to the city, along with representatives from Weed and Mount Shasta and the Economic Development Council, which is in Kansas City the first part of August. So that's kind of the next step in terms of, we've got the plan from the contractor, and we're working through the draft, and we're working through some revisions to that, but I think we're hoping to get some advice at this conference and move into the next phase after that. That's kind of where we're at. Beautification, we have our, we have an item on the agenda tonight, but we also have our chairman here. You want to give us a brief beautification meeting update, or committee update?
Yeah, Tim Holt, as you noted, we're going to have a pretty detailed discussion on the bench project, so we don't need to go into that. And I think you said the flowers might start coming out in September, downtown?
It's a little cooler, the ground is a little softer, so we'll have a right here.
And other than that, I don't know about Marty...
I missed the last meeting, so...
You don't have anything now? Did you want to say anything?
No, I wasn't going to report it at council, I was going to report anything at committee meeting.
I'm sorry, council's going to what?
I said I wasn't prepared to do anything at the council meeting, but the next beautification committee, I plan on being there.
Okay, great. Did you, and the only other thing, do you want to say anything about your, the park down there?
No, no progress on it yet since our last meeting, so, thank you. And finally, we have our marijuana task force, which met on Tuesday night at 6:30. The committee is, the task force, I should say, is working through developing recommendations to bring to the full city council for potential ordinances, potential tax measures on the ballot. It's all potentials at this point, but we're basically trying to get us to a point of being able to address the changes in state law with the passage of Prop 64. Sergeant Mero's involved in that committee, as well as several other citizen community members, and Marty and myself, and I think that we've had two very productive, albeit long, meetings. These are very complex issues that it takes time to work through. So I was encouraged by the civility and the cooperation of everybody on the committee, as well as the people in the audience at our last meeting. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers, and we'll be continuing the discussion on commercial cultivation and whether or not to allow or not various elements of commercial cultivation in the historic district and outside, throughout the rest of town, I should say. So 6:30 here Tuesday night, if you want to be a part of that discussion.
Yes.
Oh, yes, and thank you. We added a form to the, on our website, so if you check the blog on our website, you'll see a link to it. Also, if you just go under initiatives, marijuana task force, you can see a form that we've been asking for, community members to submit their comments about the four different focus areas that we're focused on, which are commercial cultivation, manufacturing... Remind me?
Indoor, outdoor, commercial?
Oh, yeah, taxation, and...
Storefronts.
And...
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing. There's four of them, you'll see them on the website. I apologize, I'm drawing a blank. But, so 6:30 Tuesday night for our next meeting. Cool?
Posted.
The only other thing that's not on our agenda that I want to do during this section is, some members of the council and I attended the Lola meeting in Etna a couple of weeks ago, a week or so ago. That's the League of Local Agencies, and I just want to say thank you to Etna, who was the host, who did a wonderful job. We had a sort of picnic-style barbecue outdoor meeting, which is the first time I think that's happened, and it was really well-attended. The Lola meetings are a great opportunity to meet with our League of California Cities Division rep, Charles Anderson, who updates us on legislation happening at the state level, and also to network with the other agencies, the other cities in our area, understanding what they're doing, sharing with them what we're doing, and our events and all that. So it was a very, very good meeting, and I was happy to represent the city there. All right. Moving on, item seven, announcements and public comment. So this is public comment time. Please come up to the podium. Please limit your comments to items that are not on our agenda tonight, because we'll have public comment on all of those items as well, but if you have a general public comment or any announcements, please come to the podium.
I think he may want to wait for the item.
Okay.
Just want to make sure you didn't...
My name is Reverend Bob Olive, I live on Shasta Avenue. I've lived here in town for two years now, and I'm part of a small group of people and businesses that have been supporting the Pine Street planters, and we do a little watering, and the hardware store gives us great price on flowers and stuff. And some of the people that have talked to me and the tourists are wondering why the fountain isn't running. You know, we know, we had a time where there was no water, and, but after I shoveled several feet off of my front lawn, I think we have enough that we could manage to get through the rest of the tourist season and throw some pennies in there, maybe that will bounce you, but I don't know. And then also, I was sitting outside and waiting, and one of the tourists talked to me and said, you know, they're concerned about the Bellknap Fountain that's continually running. And so, you know, I don't know what the story is, but, you know, just that's what a tourist is, so that's our audience, and so let's do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to talk to my buddy Tim.
Good evening, members of the council, my name is Peter Arth, 58, 59 Sacramento Avenue in the heart of the historic district. There were two letters to the editor in the Dunsmere News yesterday. One was from Reverend Bob, I hope you all looked at it, it was beautifully written, and I fully support what you're trying to do. The other was from Barbara Cross, the chair of the planning commission, that urged all of you, it's up to law enforcement, but actually, law enforcement to the extent the city has no code enforcement. But she addressed it to each member of the city council, I'm just wondering, did each member of the city council receive a copy of Barbara's letter?
I don't know. Let me answer that.
Well, I guess out of respect for the chairman of the planning commission, she addressed it to each member of the city council, I hope each of you read it, whether you received it directly or read it in yesterday's newspaper, because it reflects a high level of frustration by the chairman of your planning commission that you apparently have no interest in code enforcement, nor do you have any interest in repairing the infrastructure. This will obviously needs repair. She gives eight specific examples in her letter. I would hope that all eight examples, including the Pine Street Plaza, start showing up on your agendas. You made a big deal out of setting priorities at the beginning of 2018. One of them was sidewalks, inferentially, the entire infrastructure, curbs, sidewalks, streets, and the tree, the tree problem. At this point, I see no plan, I see no budget commitment. So what did that prioritization mean? Are you going to do anything this year, or are we stuck with the broken sidewalks and the stumps, and the shoots coming out of the stumps, and the sawhorses, and the sandbags? For how long? On a different note, I would like to announce that the River Exchange is sponsoring Brew Fest, which we hope to exceed last year's audience of around 2,000 to 3,000 people. The River Exchange is a nonprofit located in Dunsmere. It seeks to do three things, educate the public, do science around the water sheds that serve this area, and finally, do on-river restoration. And to that end, the River Exchange, as it reboots itself, is going to sponsor the annual River cleanup, mostly on the Sacramento River, the Upper Sac, on September 16. We'd hope the city would be a sponsor of this event, we hope the chain will be a sponsor of this event. It's an opportunity for young people to learn all about the river, to pick up trash, to win prizes. We're going to try to promote the event at Brew Fest at the ballpark, because we get visitors from all of Oregon, all the way down to the Bay Area. So we'll be selling real estate brand, excuse me, River Exchange branded items, and trying to fundraise to keep this worthy nonprofit alive for the next 25 years in Dunsmere. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? All right, we will move on to item eight, announcements and reports from council and staff. We'll start at the end with Marty.
I don't think I have anything to report and add at this moment.
Okay. Bruce?
Two quick things. First, I just want to let people know, the reason Dave isn't here tonight is that he just had a second operation on his torn rotator cuff, and he re-tore it during physical therapy, he was putting something behind his back, as the physical therapist said, and all of a sudden, he felt the pop, and that's where it was. So he's in a lot of pain right now, he had the surgery yesterday, and so everyone wishes him well. Second thing is, I was listening to some of the comments made here recently, and I'm really struck watching the transition that I've watched, the transitions I've watched through the different city managers, the interim, and et cetera, and then watching our new city manager, Mark Brannigan, come on board and bring everything that he's brought to this process. And one of the things that really strikes me is just a very simple fact that most people just do not really grasp or understand. You basically have a staff of one. Now, that doesn't mean that all the other people in the office are not fully engaged and important and everything else, but when it comes to doing anything above and beyond what needs to be done to keep the city running, any kind of initiative, any kind of whatever, it really comes down to one person, the city manager. And so I've seen a lot of times over the couple of weeks, I'm sorry, months I've been on the council, long emails describing all kinds of ways that things should be different, and all kinds of ways that things are bad, and expecting that those ideas will be translated into something that will appear next Wednesday, and it'll start working. This is not an excuse, but with all the different things that we're facing right now, I'm really impressed with what the city manager has been doing. He gave us, for instance, a list of all the different projects that right now are ongoing, and saying how do we want to prioritize these, the priorities that we came up with at the council meeting, where we went through the work identifying a vision and priorities and goals. We went through that with the idea that we wanted to come up with something that we could make some progress on, but it's not like by the end of the year, we're going to solve all the sidewalk problems. We don't have the manpower, we don't have the dollars. Those are realities. So I just want to impress upon everybody that if you want to know how the city's running right now, I think it's running very well under a city manager that's struggling with a lot of the challenges that are very unique to a city our size. You look at somebody like Mount Shasta, the number of people they have in their city hall, they have basically the same amount of work that runs in keeping a city managed as our staff does, but they have to do it with the four or five people that are there every day. So just, I just wanted to get that out there, because it's been a kind of a bug under my butt there, because right now, I'm really impressed with how we're moving forward. We're getting a lot of positive information from around the county about everyone's recognizing Dunsmere's got its act together, is moving forward, and so that's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you, Bruce.
Josh.
I guess just one response to Peter. I did not receive a letter, but I did receive an email from Barbara. I don't know if it was different, I don't subscribe to the paper either, I'd imagine it's the same thing, so, just an answer to that question.
Thank you, Josh. I also received many emails from Barbara about code enforcement. Over the last several months, I've had multiple in-person meetings with her, we've had joint, we had a joint council and planning commission meeting as well. I concur with Bruce, we're doing the best we possibly can, I believe, right now, under very good leadership from our city manager, to begin to address many, many, many things. And we can't do them all at once, that's just the reality. So we're, like Bruce said, we don't mean to make excuses for lack of action on items. I think it's mostly the job of elected representatives to sit up here and take it, as best we can, and to take all comments received by the public seriously. That said, on these specific things, there are plans in place to address just about everything on the list that Peter brought up. We haven't seen any, you haven't seen any budget commitment, because we haven't publicized the budget yet. There is, if I can remember off the top of my head, $21,000 allocated for sidewalk improvements in just one specific project currently in the budget. We're getting there, we're, we will begin to make things public as they, as appropriate. There's other requests to SCORE and to LTC for funds to help us with sidewalk projects. It takes time, so... That said, I don't want to be, nor am I frustrated by continuing to be prodded in that way, because I think it's important.
One more comment, if I may?
Yes, Josh.
There was the comment made that code enforcement's not happening, and it's not a priority as well. I'd like to basically make it loud and clear that code enforcement is happening. The last time I was in City Hall, I had mentioned to Julie, just about every time I go in, I get a reminder on code enforcement... get a reminder of code enforcement that I sometimes whack in and that my, that happens in our neighborhood. So it's there. It's happening. Some things are easy to solve and voluntary compliance is the easiest, and sometimes it's a very complex situation and, you know, that applies to some and not to others. So it's there. It's happening. It's in the works. As far as not knowing about sidewalks and stuff, I get a constant, every day I go to work, I park right on top of that sandbag. I feel it on my tire. I know it's there. And I look at the bush that, as it continues to grow as well, and very insightful, and we want to do something about it. I want to go cut that down right now, as a matter of fact, but it's there. We know about it, but you're going to hear it about at City Council meetings when we're ready to take action. As far as the awareness portion goes, we're very well aware of it and that's all I have to say.
Trying to find the money and the resources to do it.
Money and resources. If you can, if you can find both of those for us, we'll put on the next agenda to take action and solve that problem.
I do want to move on, but I will say, one last little piece here, which is that not only has there been code enforcement, there has been code enforcement on a building right next to yours that did in fact result in major changes, I think, and an increase in the aesthetic-ness of that storefront, that building. I'm not saying we've solved all the problems and the process is not good. I wish it were better, but there have been, not only letters been sent out and the code enforcement process started in certain places and cleanups done in certain places, but it has actually resulted in some compliance from people who we didn't expect to be compliant in that way. So we have a long way to go. I recognize that. We're going to, we're going to move on for now, if that's okay. Okay. Moving on, item, we don't have item nine. Yeah, oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologize for not being able to make it to the last meeting, but I'm glad Lieutenant Tarising was able to come in my stead. There were a couple of questions that came up, information mostly about parking down on Cave Avenue, that hopefully I can be able to address. The issue of concern was our ability to be able to extract a report on tickets that were issued in Dunsmere versus any other citations. So we've increased our coding process to be able to extract specifically parking sites in Dunsmere versus moving violations or any things like that, which will help us, of course, be able to do that. The good news is the parking down on Cave Avenue, specifically at the bridge, is greatly reduced. People are parking up on top, down from Tom Mahoney's house, all the way down to almost the parking lot to the city park. I've seen cars stretching the entire distance.
Which is also an issue.
Which is also an issue that I've been talking with Bill on, and we're trying to figure out to address that. But the better part is that they're not blocking Cave or Simpson or parking on the tracks or in people's yards or those kind of things. So it is a benefit and things are moving forward on that. One of the questions was the weekly reporting, we get a series of statistics that are sent to City Hall once a week. The question was whether or not the city could then publish those. The information that we send you is for your distribution. It's obviously intended for the City Council, but it's created in such a way that that can certainly go public. There's nothing private in there or anything like that that would cause any of the privacy concerns. So if that's what you choose, you're more than welcome to do with that information what you would like. As I continue to work day shifts, meeting with the city manager weekly, bi-weekly, sometimes three times, as they kind of come and go in and it's out of City Hall, which, which works very well to be able to work actively on things. I am going to be helping them a little bit with some code enforcement issues that are coming up. Certainly I'll open to the opportunity as other things that he believes are important that we can be able to deal with, kind of relieve some of that burden. We'd certainly be willing to help with that as well. Changing gears just a little bit, last Neighborhood Watch meeting, you may have saw there was Neighborhood Watch barbecue. We were down at the city park. We had probably about 30 people show up. A lot of, everybody just kind of brought a little bit of something, just a sign of just enjoying the evening conversation, talking, getting to know even the people in our group and outside. So again, just want to open the doors, anytime you want to come to Neighborhood Watch meetings. Second Thursday, we're kind of sandwiched between the City Council meetings. It's a great venue to stress concerns, to learn a little bit more about what's going on in the city and the neighborhood. Conversations that may not necessarily be appropriate in a Senate council meeting, a lot of those happen in the Neighborhood Watch meetings, so we can be able to facilitate that. One of the things that did come up during the Neighborhood Watch meeting is we're now coining Facebook reporting. People are having a crime occurring or they're a victim of some sort of incident, package stolen off their front porch, and videos and this networking thing instantly gets posted out of Facebook, which is a great way to share concerns with the neighbors, but if law enforcement is never called, it's just empty. It's like yelling in the woods. It's profitable for the yelling, but it doesn't get anywhere. So we encourage people, post what you think is appropriate, but if there's a crime, if there's an issue of concern, please call the sheriff's office, let us know. That way, we can track it, we can be responsible for our actions and report back to you and the City Council. If there's any questions from the council, we can address those as well. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Did we get city managers?
No, I skipped you, apparently. I usually start with you. I apologize.
No, it doesn't. It's okay. Just real quick, I just wanted to say thanks for the confidence that the City Council has placed in me, but I do want to recognize, being new here and recognizing the challenges of the lack of resources here, I think we are, there's going to be beautiful things happening. There already is beautiful things happening here. The community is wonderful. The council spends a lot of time helping out and going to meetings and going to events. And we have the community, the minister or pastor?
I'm the minister.
Okay. I thank you. It's people like you that really bring the community up. It's, the resources we don't have, when the community comes together and helps bring beautiful change, that is so much of a help. And it's that kind of stuff, along with the wonderful staff that we have, that gives me all the hope to just see this, this beautiful city just continue to glow, to glow. So I'm very appreciative of people like you and the council and our staff.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Just wanted to deliver a little Karen Logan, who recently joined us almost three weeks ago now, to take over in Elaine's absence, whom she declared. If you haven't stopped by to say hello, please do. She's filling in and just joining the group in just a wonderful way, so we're thrilled to have her. Please welcome her. She lives out of town in Castella, but she knows Dunsmere very well, so we're glad to have her.
You may want to take time to also say goodbye to Elaine. We didn't get a chance to announce that, too.
We had a going away party. Thank you, Julie. Okay, moving on. We don't have item nine. We don't have a presentation. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was unanimous. We have no public hearing, so we'll move on to item 12A. This is old business, beautification benches.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you today is, you're being asked to approve the selection of benches from the Beautification Committee and to authorize the installation of one of those benches in front of City Hall. The Beautification Committee has a separate division with Barbara and Tim, who have been working to research and make recommendations for benches to go into Dunsmere that will be part of the beautification program. And they, as attached, there's two types of benches that were proposed. They're both metal benches. There was a concern about the wood benches and how they would hold up with the weather and also possible graffiti. So they did look at just metal benches. They also did call outside agencies to see what types of benches they had and how successful they were, so they're doing their due diligence to look at what's going to be best. There are limiting factors that they've come across with the other agencies having these benches that were of commercial grade, but they're also of a high dollar value, which may be prohibitive for the city of Dunsmere or for the donations to come in that actually make this program successful. So they brought two alternatives that they feel would kind of bridge that gap. One is an all-metal black bench that is being proposed to be installed outside of the city hall. It's, looks to be a heavy bench. It does have ears that are there to bolt down to the sidewalk. And we met out there, we measured the location to make sure it wasn't going to cover any of the billboards, get in the way. We also have, we're looking at a bus stop that'll be coming nearby, so it could be a nicer overflow for people that are waiting to get on the bent, on the bus. So it seems to be a very good location. It looks to be a more doable bench, and I think it's a good location. So I think it's, for my recommendation, would be a good bench to get started and see how it's going to go about. There is another bench that is a cheaper bench. I'm not sure how it's going to be attached or how it would be secured from theft, but they are, I believe the Arts Council is looking, what's?
Arts Museum?
The Arts Museum?
Siskiyou Arts.
Siskiyou Arts Museum is, from what I've been told, is looking to take responsibility for that. And that's one of the other concerns is who's going to maintain these benches? Who's going to keep the area clean and just take any kind of liability for these benches? And I believe if we can get that in place, that may also be a possible good pilot as well, but at this time, we don't have any language written up. And I'm still not sure about the securing of it. So at this time, my recommendation is to request that the council move forward and authorize the placement of that bench in front of City Hall, the black four-foot bench.
All right. At this time, if there, are there any clarifying questions or comments for staff at this point? Okay, we're going to have a public comment. We'll begin with Tim, if you want to give us any other information as the chairman of this committee.
So briefly, we, the committee feels that this is a good project to start with, that it is doable, it's not very complicated. We just want to prove that we can get something like this done here. I think the black bench, if you look, you should have photos in your packet of.
They don't turn out very well.
Unfortunately, they came out black.
At any rate, the, the black bench, I think is appropriate for City Hall. It's kind, Mari, I think, I think the black bench is more appropriate for City Hall. The red bench that's kind of artsy with birds on the back, I think would be great, frankly, for the art museum. So, and, and these would be what we consider to be demonstration benches. Once they're in place, we're hoping that the merchants on the main street, down on Sacramento Avenue, will take a look at them and, you know, choose one or the other to place in front of their, their property. So the only other thing I'd add is that, as I said at the last meeting, I would be very happy to purchase the black bench directly from Barco Products, they're in Illinois, and, you know, work, work out with Mark on the installation. You know, I think we can have the bench in about two weeks roughly. I think, well, anyway. And then the other thing, last thing is, Bryce and I spoke briefly, I think it was at our last Beautification Committee meeting, about coming up with the draft paperwork for donors in the future, and also for, to establish who's going to be responsible for maintenance of each bench, which I think is going to be the property owner or business owner that they're in front of, is what we decided. But we, we have not had a chance to get together and work out the details on that. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Is, so, so you're willing to purchase the black bench?
Yep.
If we authorize the placement of that in front of City Hall?
Right.
Do you anticipate doing a dedication plaque, like the other benches, for the demo benches?
Okay, I was at Sportsman's Den yesterday or the day before. Now, just briefly on this, the, this is an aluminum plaque. They cut them, they do the engraving, lettering and so forth at Sportsman's Den. At a cost, I guess depending on the size, of between $10 and $20. The next step, admittedly a little more weatherproof, is bronze, which I think they have to order out. That starts at $100.
Okay.
So I, I'm going to recommend the, this version.
Is that black and there's a gold side or what?
Yeah, it's got kind of a, yeah, it's got a gold side on the back. But I believe it uses this side for the engraving.
Okay. So my question was, on the demo benches?
Yeah.
If we're considering these initial two to be demo benches, you would be purchasing the black one?
Right.
And Sam would be purchasing the red one?
Right.
And are there going to be plaques on those? Do you anticipate?
Well, I'd like to have a plaque on the City Hall bench.
Okay.
Probably with my wife and my name on it, if that's okay with everybody.
If you pay for it.
Yeah. I don't know about Sam. I'm not sure if there is going to be a plaque on that. I just don't know.
Just want to make sure when we craft the language, we make sure that we're not opening, you know, maybe language on the plaque should be subject to approval by the city manager.
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll, we'll continue on with public comment on this issue. Mr. R.
Still Mr. R. I support and applaud the initiative taken by the Beautification Committee, but like so many other things, no good deed goes unpunished. So as the owner of that property known as the Siskiyou Arts Museum, I wish you'd listen to what the last several city managers have told you. I mean, this is all good, put in some benches, because the city doesn't have to pay a dime. But the issue of if a city snow truck knocks it off its base, if somebody trips and falls, if it starts to look ratty, who's going to maintain it? The city tends to punt on those issues. The location of two benches, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you're interested at some point in visioning the entire downtown area, including the 110 acres that Union Pacific owns, the fountain, the benches that used to be there. Couldn't we have some sort of a plan at some point so that we no longer have to worry about who paints and maintains the historic railroad equipment? Who maintains the trees in the city rights of way? And who maintains the benches that these generous people are proposing to have in our city? Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm going to be liable for something new as a property owner, I'd like to know. If the city's going to take the responsibility, I'd like to know.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Are there any comments on this item from the public? Okay, we're going to close the podium for public comment. We just briefly respond to a couple of the issues that Peter raised there. One is the Beautification Committee decided on a small pilot program, essentially, something that we could accomplish this summer, to put a few benches downtown, essentially as an experiment, but as a, as a first initiative. Because we're doing that doesn't mean that we're not trying to also develop long-term goals, in fact, and plans. In fact, at our committee meeting, we established long, medium and short-term goals, and this is one of the short-term. I encourage you to attend the Beautification Committee for further clarification on some of the longer-term goals, which are all public meetings, by the way. The, the part about, the question, as you put it, the, the city punts on all of the harder stuff is just not true. We are crafting a program specifically outlining who would be responsible, who would be responsible for maintenance and all of the issues that you brought up. We've thought through all of that, and if, if this is to be a, a program where someone can purchase a bench and put it on city property or on private property, then we've established the understanding that the property owner would be responsible for that. So that's all going to be outlined and laid out in, in the program language. So while the citizens of Dunsmere's tax dollars might not go to pay for maintenance, that I don't think that's fair to characterize the city as punting on the issue. No, we're trying to actually create a program that would be sustainable. Albeit a pilot program. Okay, so those are, those are my responses there. Okay, so those are, those are my responses there. Before us, if it's okay if I just give you my thoughts on what we have before us tonight. I'm in favor of approving the placement of, yes, Mari?
I just wanted to ask Tim a question.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Actually, I thought that we were involved with one bench, but two is, you know, it's even better. I'm wondering now, I thought that the placement, that you would approach the property owner. Peter Lee, you know, Mr. R's comments made me believe that he wasn't approached. I'm just wondering, you know, what your.
I, you know, I'll just be very simple, simply respond to this that in case a Siskiyou Arts Museum, Barbara Cross, you know, who's on the beautification committee, is also on board of the Siskiyou Arts Museum, I guess in speaking, I hesitate to speak for her, but she clearly is speaking for the Siskiyou Arts Museum. You know, has there been any communication between you and Barbara on this? Okay, so it sounds to me like that maybe there should be some direct communication, in this case with the property owner. You know, and I think that's a simple matter of art without the Peter. I didn't necessarily hear a no from Peter, but again, that's something, I think this is something where we shouldn't do it right here, obviously. I think Barbara, you and Barbara need to talk, is what it was meant to. I just want something out.
Thank you, Tim.
I just wanted some clarification on that.
That help?
Thank you. So generally, I, I'm, I'm in favor of authorizing the placement of the donated bench in front of City Hall. And it's, and it sounds like really that's the only issue for us, right? We're not authorizing the placement of any other benches because that needs to happen with, as we've seen, the property owners. So I'm in favor of it. It's a pilot program. The, the city's not shelling out any expense at this point. We're just authorizing, except for staff time, to install the bench, right? Is Public Works going to install the bench?
Public Works will install this bench and also be maintaining this one as well since it's outside City Hall.
Thank you. Also specifically for, if we decide that this pilot program is a, is not a success for some reason, this specific one outside of City Hall, I think serves multiple purposes, not only as part of this program, but like you said, with additional seating for the hopefully soon to be additional large bus stop that's going to be near there. So I'm in favor of it. Bruce?
I'd just like to point out for those who may have joined this conversation without having heard the first one, we did have this before us before, and this is a re, coming back and having done the due diligence, looking at the various options with regards to durability and construction. So I know that that was also a complement Kessler's concern too. So I think this is a good answer to that question.
That's a good point. You know, if you look through the, the other research that the committee did and then the, the city manager did, looking through some of those suppliers, pretty expensive for some of these benches. I mean, the one even in, what was it, Willow's or Williams? Can't remember.
Winters, I think.
Winters, I'm sorry. Small, small city spent fourteen hundred dollars a bench on their benches. So must be a heck of a bench.
Well, those are cases where I believe the city somehow has.
Right, and the city purchased those benches, that's right.
They actually buy those.
That's right. So I think that the, you know, again, we're looking at a scanned picture here. But it, it looks to be the, the four hundred dollar option there looks to be a, a pretty substantial bench. That's the six-foot one, right? Or are we doing four-foot? The four-foot one.
That's another point that I want to make is being kind of, you know, the, the, this is going to be a four-foot.
Okay.
Which means there were some concerns that were asked by, by Dave about people sleeping on the benches. And so if you have a shorter bench, that's less likely.
Agreed. Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Am I in the motion?
Uh, a second, Mari?
We haven't finished with the.
Hold on, sir.
Thank you. They look a lot more substantial than the first attempt. I think that both of them are attractive. Unfortunately, the red one doesn't have a footing, you know, to be able to, but that's something you have to work out with property owners, so.
Can I add something? Mari actually showed me, the first bench that I proposed, it looks kind of wood and metal. She actually has sitting on her porch.
Covered porch.
Yeah, and I had a look at it and I had to agree with the council. I think the council was very wise at its last meeting in expressing some concern about how, well, I took a look at her bench and it's, you know, it's attractive, but it's, it's obviously not so durable.
This looks like your choice of the black one is, is it made out of raw iron?
It is steel, I forgot the term right, steel.
Okay. It's close for the price. I think that you did a good job.
Thank you.
Any thoughts, Josh? Let's do it. All right, is there a motion?
Do you want to move?
Yep.
I move to approve the installation of the on-metal bench, a black steel tube construction, four feet in length, from Barco Products of Illinois in front of City Hall. Yay, Illinois. That last part.
Sounds like a good motion. Are, do we need to include language that, that this is being donated and, or has that already been done essentially by us?
It's in the staff report that it's not, no cost to the city, so.
Yeah, the motion, the, the motion made gives us direction as to.
Okay.
And authorizes what needs to be done.
All right, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Mari seconds?
Third.
Is all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was passed unanimously. Yes, sir.
So council and the city manager are okay by directly purchasing this bench?
Yes.
Yes.
And they have it installed.
In fact, we're assuming that you will.
Make sure.
Just make sure you work with him on getting it installed before somebody can steal it.
Well, I'm going to have it delivered to my home probably and then we'll work out.
Oh, so you're going to wait, you're going to use it before? Is this a, is this a pre-used bench?
Have to rent it from us for a little cost.
Well, I hope you work out the issues on the red bench, so.
On the red bench?
On the red bench. It's very.
Yeah, but like, it needs to be a conversation.
Right.
It's about Sam, you know.
Yeah. Or, or, or consider the, the shorter four-foot black benches as, as the standard and do those throughout town. Because I think they do look nice as well and, and they do have the footings to be able to bolt, bolt in easily.
Yeah, it's an experiment, we'll just see, you know, what people like.
Great. Thank you, thank you for all your work on this, Tim. Okay, moving on. We are at item thirteen A, Big Fish Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council's being asked to authorize the funds that were not spent last fiscal year for the Big Fish Program due to excessive river flows to be authorized in this year from the general fund reserves. There was, due to the excessive snow and rain of this winter, the, the Big Fish Program was planning to do some planting in the river, but they were afraid that whatever they would put in the river would have just washed down the river because of the excessive high flows. They did come in, staff came in, Brian Wilson, Pollard Works Maintenance Work came in, saying that they were looking to get a load of fish and wanted authorization. That was just after the end of the fiscal year, it was the beginning of July. I made it clear that I had no authorization to allow that to happen because the fiscal year was over and that we would have to get city council's authorization since we're in the new fiscal year. So I did meet with Big Dave and Pollard Works, Brian Wilson, and we talked about the program, the benefits of the program being that they do take the fish up to the school to show the, one of the benefits is they take the fish up to the school to show them and that it is an economic development driver for the public and for people out of town to come in and utilize the services and businesses in the city. So before you today, and I know that we have members from the, the public here that would also like to speak, is the request to use the general fund reserves to fund what was not spent last fiscal year, if authorized. And there are three plantings that would be done, one for each month. And if it's authorized today, we'd be scheduling one planting next week and then one each month after.
All right. Are there any questions from the council at this point?
The only thing I'd say is, since these two here aren't under the public comment, but they may want to speak as actually.
We're going to have, we're going to have public comment.
Yeah, I know, okay. I was just going to say they almost are here to explain it in a way, but you're right, public comment.
Okay. Any questions of staff, clarifications?
I don't have any, any questions.
Okay, I do want to take this time to, for the public's benefit and for my own, to have us understand a little bit better what we're talking about in terms of the program. What, in your opinion, Mark, and I know you're, haven't been here, weren't here when the program began, but I'm, I just want to make sure it's, it's understood. Is there, is there a Big Fish Committee anymore or is, is it just Dave who is leading these efforts? And sort of what is the program as you see it?
Well, there is a Big Fish Committee. I'm not sure of the makeup. I know that our Pollard Works Maintenance Work One, Brian Wilson is on the committee. I know that Big Dave, council member Big Dave is on the committee. I'm not sure of other members. So it's, it's on our agenda as a, as a committee.
But it's, it's not one of our sort of stand, standings city committees?
No.
Okay, okay.
So I've been, I've heard about the committee. I don't know, I've been told that there's two, two members. Oh, yeah, Richard Dinges, I was told was on it as well, but.
Okay.
Maybe we have some clarification from the committee member.
I think you've referred to Mark on it.
Okay.
Richard Dinges, so.
Brad Maris.
Is Brad on there?
Earl Scalco was on it.
Okay.
But they all had to submit letters to the council for approval.
Right.
On the committee.
Right.
I was appointed by, by council and, and we were meeting weekly when Richard was setting up the meetings.
Okay.
And as time went, the meetings just kind of went away.
Okay.
We haven't tried to get no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My understanding is shortly after we made your appointment to mayor, we changed some of the committee assignments to make it a freestanding committee, free of the city council, but it's still a committee. I didn't understand it then and I don't understand it now, but I know it's a freestanding.
If the council appointed, appointed the members, then it's a city committee of some sort.
Yeah. I think we just removed it from our official list of committees.
Okay.
That's just.
But it, it sounds like the, the committee was constituted and was active at one point, but now maybe is less active.
It, it was formed because we were spending some of the funds.
Right.
We wanted to make sure that everything we did ran after the council and Big Dave was supposed to be our, our candidate on the council.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that was the only other, oh, just the specifics about the request for tonight. So if, make sure I understand it. The, the funds that were allocated last budget, last year's budget, last fiscal year's budget, there are thirty-five hundred dollars remaining in those funds. Went, I'm sorry?
They revert to the general.
I understand, I'm getting there. So those thirty-five hundred dollars that weren't spent get reverted to the general fund reserves when the fiscal year ends. And that's why it's not just an automatic that there's money to be spent on this initiative. That now we have to actually move them from reserves and allocate them. As, as, essentially as a budget amendment, right?
I wouldn't say a budget amendment. The money did reserve back to the general fund reserve. The budget for staff is a, a guide of what we are allowed to buy. Anything outside that budget has to come to city council for a, a request and there would be an amendment at that time.
Okay.
So since we don't have a current budget that's adopted by the city council, there wouldn't have to be an amendment done. It would just be reflected in, if approved, would be reflected in this current fiscal year's budget.
Okay. And then my other question is if, if we were to take this action, would, would that essentially get us through all of the plantings for this fishing season? That there would be one planting per month for the next three months? And that leads me to believe that this amount of funds is, is necessary if you start, I guess, at this part of the season. Is that accurate?
The intent is to get through this fishing season.
Okay.
With three plantings.
Okay. And it's, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. All right, we'd like to have a public comment on this item. So if you're here to speak about this, please come up, state your name and give us your comments.
Good evening. I'm Craig Williams from Plymouth, California. And it's my honor to be here. I really enjoy your town. I've been coming here for twenty years. I'm a member of four fly fishing clubs. I guess I'm pretty much hooked on fly fishermen. But I've also been involved with your program for the years you've had it going. And I've brought numerous club members up here on outings. And I know for a fact that they enjoy the program you provide for them. The Upper Sack has a, a certain population of wild fish, but the fish that you plant at your expense are very beneficial because especially this year and the fact that for whatever reason, right now, things are really slow on the river. I've been up here fishing for two days and it's kind of the general outlook. And as far as continuing with Dunsborough's tradition and trying to encourage folks to come here, spend their money like, like we do in town, I would just kind of urge you to consider keeping the program going. It's hard to quantify your return, I understand that. I heard from one of the major motel owners last year that last year was one of their best years. But you decided to go forward with the program last year in lieu of our drought and many rivers in Northern California area being non-fishable. We had quite a few fishermen up here and it's got to relate back in dollars to your budget, which I understand is an issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
We're going to help that microphone situation real quick here.
I find it a little bit.
You don't have to get too close to it.
I ripped the last one up.
You guys ready? Brian Wilson, forty-four eleven Olive Street. I've been part of the Big Fish Program since it began. It was all a program that was created for the belief that the TOT money that was brought into the town wasn't being utilized and it was believed that it could be utilized by giving it back to the business owners and, and make, make something out of the money that TOT brought in. Let's see, I'm on the Big Fish Committee. I plant the fish and I'm, I'm also an avid fly fisherman. And it's, this program, you've all heard me talk about how wonderful it is and how great it is. To me, just the positive impact that it brings in the community, it's something that, that's not negative politics, which we hear all the time, this negatives. To be able to go out and work with the public and, and show the fish and show them to the kids at the schools and, and meet guys like Craig Williams and his friends that come up, it's a real addition to Dunsborough that I don't think a lot of people see, but I do, I, I see it and I know it's there. I, I think, I'm going to go into the committee a little bit. Because what we've done on the committee is, is we, we knew we needed to give council some idea of what we were doing. So this committee, it was intended to be a really good thing, but sometimes committees can, can really have their problems with communication especially. We, we brought, we met with Chad Edwards, the Fish and Game Officer. We addressed issues with illegal fishing. We took time and we posted throughout town in different locations, the regulations. We've, we've actually, I've come here on opening day and done presentations on how to catch and release properly so we can not impact the environment by so much. We've, we've made maps, we've done T-shirts, we've made cards and put them in hotels for questionnaires. This is all stuff that the committee's tried to do to, to let council know that what's going on and, and it's just not getting back and, and sometimes I think you can't see dollars and cents. I think that you, you can't. And, and I have a story, I've, I've told it before. I was, I had a boy come up to me and his dad and his, and the boy one, shook my hand and said, you know, his cousin had caught a fish the year before and it was eight pounds and, and the boy's dad, turns out he's a, he's a brain surgeon from LA. And he said, you know, he's, I was on vacation with my family in Costa Rica. And he's all, my son cried the whole first week. I actually put him in an airplane and we flew to Dunsborough, he and I did, so he could catch one of your fish. And, and, and he, and he was smiling while he said it, you know? So, so you know that, that it's special to, to somebody like that. And, and that means a lot to me when I'm doing the program. I, I think one of the things I, and I don't know, I don't, it's kind of a misinterpretation of the money. And we, the cost of the load of fish is about $800 to put the fish in. This isn't counting my labor. But then there's money gonna be left over out of this $3,500. And that is, is where I think council and the committee need to get together and decide on the direction of what we do for next year. I'm at the belief and so is committee members that this shouldn't be a city-run program. It, it needs to be run by, by the chamber or an outside organization through sponsorships. And if we're to take some of that money that's left over and actually hire somebody to try to find us these sponsorships, I, I think that's the only way that, that we can sustain this program for the future. I think if, if we just throw that money in the river, which, you know, we can. It can, it can all, it can get another load of fish and we can throw it all in the river. But then we give away all hope of next year's program. And, and I, I don't, I don't know if I'm ready to do that yet. I, I will admit that it's very, it's very hard on my body physically to pack those fish in. It, it's hard on my schedule with work. So there are some negatives to it, but those are just selfish ones for me. I, I don't, I just, if anybody has any questions on the program, I'd love to take them or.
Anybody?
Well, again, I have some questions.
I want, Brian, is it okay if we give the rest of the public a chance to make their comments?
Absolutely.
And then, and then we'll have the council ask you or anybody else questions. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Brian.
Peter, uh, members and members of the audience, of course, I have great respect for Brian Wilson. I know for whatever reason, council member Keisler believes this is his legacy. I don't know why. But I thought the testimony of Brian Wilson is exactly correct on the point that this shouldn't be a city program going forward. It never should have been a city program. If, for the budget year you're closing out and for the budget year that's coming up, 17, 18, you can find money in your general fund to buy fish in another county, use city labor and city equipment to dump the fish into the Upper Sacramento, knowing we have the Cisson hatchery right up the street about 10 miles away. You tell us in the audience to be patient, be patient. We don't have any staff, we don't have any budget, but be patient. Good things are gonna happen. And then you're seriously considering an appropriation of $3,500 on your precious, precious general fund to buy fish for a program that even Brian, as a supporter, says shouldn't be a city program. If somebody thinks the economics of the big fish program are favorable, including the big fish committee, find the people to fund it. I was very upset that Pace Engineering made a $5,000 donation to the big fish program. Whether it's the big fish program or community hunger or fixing the sidewalks or the river exchange, why doesn't everyone compete on a level playing field for prop fee funds and for general funds? The big fish program magically appears on your agenda over and over and other competing public interests in our town can't get on the agenda at all. It's not fair. And if you prioritize your expenditures of our monies at all, I can't see how you justify spending $3,500 out of the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments on the item? Okay. Can we have Brian come back up? As I think there are a couple of questions maybe. And we'll begin with Mari, if that's okay?
Well, you brought up something, Brian, and I'm questioning why we're being asked to take $3,500 out of reserve when you say it only costs 800 for planting?
The reason that that money, it was $3,500 that was left from last year's program.
I, I know that part.
Okay.
Why are you being asked $3,500 if it only costs 800 to do the planting, three plantings on schedule?
If, if, if the council only awards $2,400 for the program, then, then we'll have three loads of fish that'll go in the river and the program will basically die at that point and, and they're, and, and without any kind of promotion for next year. The money was thought to be something to either add another load of fish or to, or to promote it.
Just to clarify, the shipment that you're talking about, the, you said six, or 600 or 800?
I think it was 800 is what it was.
800, and that's just for the, the smaller fish?
Yes, and that is a good point.
If you're looking to get the larger fish, it would cost more.
And, and that's something that we could pay for extra. But this, the fish that we would be getting right now would only be between 10 inches and 20 inches, which is a good fish.
That's a good sized fish.
But if we pay, it's, it goes up to 6.99 a pound for fish over that size compared to 4.99 a pound for smaller fish. So if we wanted to spend extra and get big fish, we, you could do that with the money. All I'm asking you now is, as a public member, I'm not even here as an employee, as, as a, just to, it's, it's a good program and, and if you, you can either do or not.
Were you through asking your questions?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mari.
I just wanted to clarify that. That's the first time it's been known that I've heard it publicly. And I'm questioning the difference here as to, you know, $800, I mean, that's a pretty good sized fish. And he's answered my question.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
I wanted to push back on something you said. Not, not that you're wrong or anything, but I just want to put this in a different context. You said that if, if we don't get this extra that you're envisioning, that the program is dead. I would say that's not true. I would say that what it means is we have to meet between now and the beginning of the next year and figure out where to go. But I know there's support for it. I know there's people that'll work their butts off to make it happen. So I, I would like it to be laid out there that if we don't give this money, would you agree on that?
I, I get what you're saying, but our staff is so shorthanded that.
I understand.
That you'd be basically asking me to go out and try to get, or help, or ask Mark to go out and try to get help. And this way would allow us to hire somebody who does this for a living to go out and try to get the city of Dunsmere help in getting money for the big fish program.
Okay, I, I understand that totally.
That's, that, that's.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying that I'm, I'm thinking that next year we're gonna be in a different position. We just, right now are looking at the fact that they don't want the fish program to die this year. And, and that the only reason that we're in this situation is because we didn't spend the money in time. I mean, I know.
Yeah, thank you.
It's one thing to say we're grabbing it out of the general fund. The only reason that money is in the general fund is because we didn't expend it in time.
Yeah, thank you, that's, the reserves, right.
Now, I, I'd also like to say though, something that's been, I, I think we need to look at here. And that is that we haven't for a long time had any kind of a clear picture of how the city is going to support tourism, let's say. I mean, I'm the, and Josh and I are both on the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. And unfortunately, we haven't been meeting for a while. But the general concept that is the city gonna support tourism? I think, first of all, it should be very clear that we will. And second of all, there should be a better idea of how we're gonna do it. And, and right now I've been talking with the executive director, Richard Dinges, for, for quite a while about the idea that right now we get a certain amount of TOT in. And the general idea that is it's supposed to increase tourism. And, and so the whole idea should be that the council says, okay, we're gonna look at the, the chamber as our, our vehicle for doing it. But we should also come up with a consolidated idea of how much of the TOT we're gonna spend towards developing future tourism. And so if you do it that way, if we were to say going forward, let's get together with chamber, let's figure out a, a number, how much does it take in a year to advertise? How much does it take to do all the things that we as a city would like to support? And then say, how much can come from chamber funds and how much can come from the city? And from that standpoint, looking at the big fish program would simply be, it's another one of the programs, railroad days, big fish program, et cetera. My big concern today, and I know how much certain people care about it, my big concern today is I don't think we should let.
Bruce, Bruce, I'm sorry, before we get into sort of.
Okay.
Our, our deliberations, I just want to make sure this is, this is time for us to ask questions of Brian.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we look at a TOT from a big construct.
Okay.
And, and you, you did make a point that I, I kind of did overlook. And this is money from last year. I, I know the upcoming budget is, is coming up and I've heard rumors that it's a really tight budget. So when I'm speaking, I'm kind of speaking out of the back of my mind that there might not be a lot of money in this next budget for the big fish program. So when I, I speak it, I, I think that next year, when you get ready to make your budget for this upcoming year, I don't see a lot of money for the big fish program. So I know that in order for it to happen next year, that there has to be a secondary plan to get money coming in. And, and that isn't from our budget and that's wrong.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Josh, any questions?
No questions.
So Brian? Okay, I just have a, a couple of quick things. And, and maybe Craig can help us answer these questions too, but maybe Brian. First thing is a, a point that Peter brought up about there's a, there's a closer hatchery. Is that an option for us or not?
Love to answer that question.
Yeah.
In fact, whenever you were sitting there, you probably saw me react. We, we've looked at those issues and we've chosen to go to the hatchery that we go to because of the makeup of the body of water. It's called Lost Creek. It runs about the same temperature as the Upper Sacramento. It has the same rock structure. These fish are raised basically wild. They're the same fish that Rayleigh Supermarket is selling out their butcher department. They're, they're a first-class fish. They're not raised in concrete. And, and as Craig, a fisherman, it's night and day between those fish and the fish that we're putting in. Anybody can tell when, because of the quality.
Between the, the hatchery fish and Cisson?
The ones we put in are twice the fight. They're, they're just, they're built for this river. They're, they're.
Okay. Can you talk, is, that makes sense to me. Is there a significant cost difference? Like, are hatchery fish at Cisson less expensive?
I don't know, I've never checked cost up here. Because when we, we, we went down, the first load of fish we got, we got from Man, which is down by Red Bluff. And it's a warmer area, slower water. I put the fish in the river and you could just tell they did not like it. They, they weren't happy, I lost fish. I then spoke with, oh, anyway, the owner of Hat Creek. And he told me, try Lost Creek, see what happens to with their facility. And we go up there. One of the benefits we have of the program is we did build our own tank. We took a, a big black drum and insulated it and, and, but our water here is cold enough and clean enough that we can just take our water out of the tap and refill my tank. Other places can't do that because of the chlorine. So it's a pretty, it's, we're, we're very, we're very lucky the way it was set up to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to go.
No, that, thank you for that. Something that Craig mentioned, just that, that there are the, the planted big fish and then there, there are, I think you maybe said a small population of wild fish. Maybe you didn't say small population, but there are, there are wild fish who are gonna be smaller than these planted fish on, on the whole, right?
Well, that's, that's kind of hard to say. Because, you know, you have a good, you, you used to have a really good population of wild fish. I mean, speaking from years of fishing up here, the drought has taken its toll. We had some pretty successful outings from the locals here in the beginning part of the year. And the question is, where are those fish they caught then? Well, that's a head-scratcher, we don't know. I've been up here for five days over the Fourth of July weekend, fishing every day. And then I fished the last two days. And I'm a fairly confident fisherman. And I'm not quite sure what's, it's not the numbers of fish we're used to seeing. I don't know if that answers your question, but the Trophy Fish Program is kind of a, a trophy. You know, it's something when our fishermen come up in the clubs, which we have 17 clubs from Northern California and quite a few of them come up here for their outings, they have it in their head now that we have a program up here that gives them an opportunity to hook one of these five-pound fish or whatever, you know?
Okay.
Question, on, on the same note, can I?
Uh huh.
I spoke with a guy named Curtis Knight and he, he runs the Shasta trout program, or Mount Shasta trout, Cal trout.
Cal.
Cal trout. And he told me that they really like our program because if our fish weren't in the river, people would be catching all the native fish out of the river. So this, this program gives the native fish a chance to not be caught because people are focusing on the, the planter fish. And that people don't know, if you hold two fish up to the normal person and say, which is a planter, which is a native, they cannot tell you.
Other than the size.
They're just taking them home, other than they catch them and they're taking them home.
But, but the planted fish are bigger, right?
Some are 10 inches.
Okay.
Some are 20 inches.
Okay.
Some are 30 inches.
Okay. The reason I ask is, and again, not to get into the, the deliberation necessarily, but I think there's this sense that, that there, well, we also know that the Fish and Game also plants fish, right? In our, in the Upper Sack. There, there's a lot of speculation and, and not a whole lot of facts around this piece of the debate, which is that we, we've heard that if we plant the fish, the big fish program fish, that Fish and Game might plant less fish because of that. I see some nodding heads, but we don't, I, we don't know if that's true or not. I, I'll take your word for it, maybe that is true. So, so, you know, I think there's a concern that spending, uh, city funds on, that, that could be, you know, Fish and Game planted fish instead and, and achieve a similar effect or the same effect. There, I think that's contributing to the cloud of, you know, hesitation here. So I wanted to put that out there. So do you, do you have an answer to that question? Do you know if Fish and Game will plant less fish that they would have otherwise because the city is planting fish?
I don't really have that answer, but it's a speculation. The thing of it is, I've been coming up here nine years with this outing in October. And part of that time, I would have direct contact with the, the Fish and Game Department manager down in Sacramento. I had her direct email and I'd confer with her, were you gonna be planting fish on such and such a, a time? And at a, a point in time, I got a, a schedule of their planting and their poundage. And my gut feeling is they backed off considerably in the last three or four years. That's just my feeling.
It seems like it should be public information and we could find out, right?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
And they, they should have the poundage and when they plant. I haven't looked into that in the last few years, but it was a concern back, actually before the big fish program started.
Okay. Thank you. And my, my last question is specifically, you said that a load of fish is $800 for this size fish. How many fish is that?
It's about 100 fish. We've counted them before and it, it all depends if you start throwing the big fish into the mix, then we only get 150 pounds of the, of the small fish and 25 pounds of the big fish.
Okay.
And that keeps it around the same price.
Okay.
But getting the big fish at the hatchery is a lot more difficult for them. And with us only getting three loads this year, we don't, we aren't a priority customer like in the past where we did 10 loads and they don't mind going and doing a little extra.
Okay.
But now it's, you know, it's a cost of doing business.
Okay, so in the past, we've done, past years, it's been about 10 loads a year?
Last year, what we did is 10 loads and, and I rotated the loads between 175-pound loads of the small fish and 150 pounds of the small fish and 25 pounds of the big fish. So I did five of those, each, each of those loads.
So there were 10 loads and there was only 7,500 allocated last year, right? And there's $3,500 left over?
We had $5,000 donation.
That's right, okay.
Pace Engineering last year.
Thank you.
And, and in the past, and also we, we did have locals donate last year to the program, I believe about $1,600 between local guides and fishermen and just Steve Burchard brought that money in.
Okay.
And that was paid for two more drops for us last year.
Okay.
So it, there is a call for the program.
Yeah.
Can I ask?
Thank you, Brian. Yes, Mari.
I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Craig.
Craig. But Brian, do you know, he is not, you know, sure of the answer. Do you know whether if we don't plant fish, Fish and Game will not plant?
I, I believe that when you buy a fishing license, that the state of California is contracted to put so many fish in this river in so many areas. They, when they leave their hatchery, they have, say, 700 pounds of fish in their truck. They have stops that are already marked out for them to drop. If, they, they can't not drop fish in here because of our program. That would be in the, not the best interest of the public because we're still paying for fishing licenses either way. So I, I just don't see that being common, common. I don't see it. So I just don't see that being common, I don't see it being common.
Well, I just want to make a point, up to last year, there's a website for the Big Fish Program. And I am either administrator or commentator anyway. But I would get the fishing reports from a source as to when the stocking was done, and I used to post them, you know, for the upper sack. You know, I...
The Fish and Game ones, you mean?
Um, I don't, don't hold me to my answer. But it was, you know, they had a list of where they were making, you know, you know, stocking. All the way up to the upper sack, and I used to post them that, you know, this is up to about last year. I haven't continued with that, so maybe they're not available anymore, as you say. But up to last year, I was posting those on your website.
And it might just take a letter to them or a phone call to ask to have that email down to somebody down here and then post it, you know, I'll bet it's
Yeah, I mean, they were releasing, yeah, they were releasing it publicly. And it wasn't that difficult to get ahold of. I was on, you know, I was able to find it rather easily, so.
Okay.
It was just to answer you that, yeah, up to last year, they made the information available.
In the interest of moving on, I think Bruce has maybe one more question for Brian?
I have to ask Craig.
And Craig?
Yes, sir. So, all this fishing you're doing out there, I'd like to propose two different scenarios. One scenario, the fishing that you've been experiencing five days, not so well, continues on, we don't put any more fish in ourselves. The other side, we put in three loads and the work gets out. What are the two different scenarios in terms of the impact of people coming to Dunsmere? If it continues on like this, you see people hearing the word that Dunsmere is not good fishing, let's not go there, let's go somewhere else?
That's really hard to say, but right now, we're having rivers get, come into good fishing conditions in other areas, which wasn't the case the last three years. I mean, we had good water and pretty good fishing up here, considering the drought. That's hard to say. My group, for example, last year, when we came up with California Fly Fishers Unlimited, one of our fishermen is very accomplished. And for the most part, all of them go back in. We don't take fish, okay? And he told me he caught 60 fish in a day. I believe him, because he's an excellent fisherman. And he caught fish where people don't ordinarily fish, he's very athletic. So those fish were enjoyed by him. And there's no reason why they can't be enjoyed by everybody else, but over kind of maybe a broader length of time. I'm not quite answering your question, though.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. First of all, I want to thank all the members of the public who spoke on this issue. And we're going to formally close the public comment portion and move on to the deliberation on this topic. We've had lots of discussion already, but I'm happy to lead our discussion if there aren't any other... Does anybody else want to?
I'll be a strong opponent, so I'll just say that. But other than that, I'll leave it to you to lead.
Okay. Again, I want to thank all the members of the public for helping us understand what's going on, not just advocating for or against or anything like that, but really contributing to the debate. I really do want to thank you for that. I, we're using this sort of $3,500 issue from last year as a way to, as a way to talk about Big Fish, but it's only a piece of the discussion. As Brian very eloquently and expertly pointed out, we have to find a way to strengthen and sustain the program if we think it's a good program, right? And that may or may not include it being a city program going forward in the future, in my opinion. So I think there is much more discussion. For such a small piece of our budget, we do talk about Big Fish a lot. And I'm appreciative of that fact, but I think that there, for us to do as Brian says, and I think is a good thing, to strengthen and sustain the program, more discussion and debate is going to be needed. With the issue that's before us tonight, though, here's how I come down on it, and I have done a lot of thinking about it. I think that you can follow the letter of the law, or you can follow the intent of the law in a lot of cases. And we're not talking about laws here, we're talking about budgets. But in my opinion, the intent of the city council who passed the budget last time was to spend that money on the Big Fish Program. And so the fact that it's reverted back to our reserve this time, I think, is, creates a sticky point for us. But I think that, I think that we could spend that money, as Brian said, with the understanding that it's coming out of our reserves, and that reserve is dwindling as a result of us continuing to pass deficit budgets. So as Craig pointed out, we understand that we are in a difficult budget time. That being said, I think that we should follow the intent of the program from when it was done last time and allocate for that money to be spent this fiscal year. Then, and take direction from the committee, from Brian and the other members of the committee, hopefully they will resume active role in the discussion, to do the three loads, and then use the remaining money, I would hope, and will advocate for in the future, I think, to do exactly what Brian said. Make this a sustained, a sustainable and strengthened program by taking it out of the realm of the city council. Mostly because of the contentiousness that it helps create. If we could find a way to sustainably fund the program through sponsorship, through maybe some contribution from the city at some point, perhaps, maybe that contribution is the time that it takes the unemployed to go do it. Because we do have the infrastructure, the tank and all of that. I'm compelled by that argument as well. But I think that it'll be better for the program, which I think is a good program. And I think I've said publicly in the past that that's not true. For a small-minded person like me, I have thought in the past that this is dumping fish in the river. Why are we dumping fish in the river? They're going to float down the river. How, why do they stay here? I've tried to educate myself about fluid dynamics and fish behavior and talk to actual fishermen. And I will say that for the first time in my life, about two weeks ago, I bought my first fishing license. And I'm trying to teach myself through, and with the training of some very experienced people how to fly fish. I figure if we're going to live in 37 miles of the best trout fishing around, then I should learn how to fly fish. That being said, I think in the past, I've thought perhaps wrongly, perhaps rightly, in some, to some degree, that that the city shouldn't be spending its money doing that. Whether, the merits of the program aside, should these be taxpayer dollars that we're spending? I had an issue with that, I still have an issue with that. That being said, I'm in favor of us spending the $3,500 with a specific direction to buy three loads of fish and use the remaining funds, which would be $2,400, $1,100.
Approximately.
Approximately, not including your time. And we understand that that's city time, that's additional to this. To, $2,400 for the fish, coming out of $3,500 would remain about $1,100 in the allocation. To give a specific direction, I would hope, to the committee to use those funds to promote the program this year, some, but to explore, whether it's through hiring an expert or putting our heads together, to create a sustainable way for this program to continue that can be funded outside of taxpayer dollars. I would love to see that happen. Even if that doesn't happen, we're going to have to consider this again. It's in our budget for next time, so it's going, we're going to talk about it again, for sure. So that's where, that's where I come out. I have, again, not been super knowledgeable or in favor of the program in the past. I've tried to educate myself. That's where I come down on it. And again, I, all of the people who spoke tonight were very compelling. And those stories of the catching the fish and the amount of tourism that we know that the program does bring is very important. If we say we're committed to promoting, helping promote tourism in whatever ways we can, I'm in favor of all of that. I still have an issue with the city running this program specifically, because it creates all these issues. So we're going to have to solve those going forward. But this is actually maybe a plan for us to do that. Finish out the commitment from last year by planting some more fish for this season. We're getting a late start. And actually allocating some of those funds to try to create a program that's sustainable going forward. That's what I'm in favor of at this time. Marty?
Well, Brian knows I'm a big proponent of fishing. He's the one that showed me when I was down at City Park, he was releasing fish, I got to handle some of those beautiful fish, so. And, you know, I love fishing. I watch the fishermen walk down my street, you know, and they come back happy. I show, I'll tell them where I hear there's been success. So I am, you know, I fish myself, I haven't been able to for a few years. Yeah, I don't have anything against the program, except for the fact that it is in the city. I was willing to fund the $3,500 until you told me that it only costs 800 per load. That's all I'm really willing to fund. And not the excess as to, you know, some way try to figure out how, you know, it's going to be sponsored. That idea has been debated, has been, you know, around for at least the last two years, that, you know, private sponsorships need to happen. Nothing has been happened. I really am really surprised that it only costs $800, but we're being asked for 35 with the, you know, I was led to believe that the whole $3,500 was going to, you know...
I think that... I'm sorry. It could be.
Yeah, that...
Would you prefer that? Would you prefer that they spend all of that money on fish?
No, I would prefer that we just give them the 800 per the three plantings so that the season is finished out.
Okay.
It, I feel a little bit deceived.
By whom?
I just feel a little bit deceived, you know, by the numbers. That it only costs 800, but somehow we're, you know, going to take 3,500 out of the reserves. It was not spent, yes.
I think that, if, can I try to just clarify that?
Let me finish, okay, Bryce? It's my chance to...
She's trying to clarify, yes.
It's not because I don't like the program. I've lost my train of thought, sorry.
I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt, I was just trying to clarify.
I've lost my train of thought, I...
Well, I'm just trying to, we're having a debate here. My understanding is that the 3,500, the reason we're at that number is not because that's what it costs for three loads of fish, but because that's what was left over in the fund. And if we're taking, we're operating with the idea that we're trying to follow the intent of the passage of the last year's budget to allocate those funds for the program, that, that's why, that's why we're at the $3,500 number.
Right, that's what I just found out.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. But you are in favor of $2,400?
Yeah, I'm in favor of finishing out the season. And, you know, they have to actually get their heads together and find how they're going to fund us.
Right, and what, all I'm saying is that achieving the goal of finishing, of taking what was allocated last year and spending that on the remainder of this season would get us three plantings of fish, or more if we wanted, but also actually give a little bit of funds to help create a sustainable program going forward, rather than the illusion, A-L-L, illusion, which Brian alluded to, about the program being sort of on the chopping block for next year's budget, which frankly it is, at least in the zeitgeist. So that's, do you understand what I mean? I think, I think...
I understand you perfectly, Bryce. I just don't happen to agree with the numbers, okay?
Okay.
I just stated my position that I'm willing to vote for funding, you know, three plantings. Brian has made it known that it's about, it's $800 a planting, and that I can commit to.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Question, it's my understanding that the funding for promotion comes out of this budget also, is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, so this is one of the things, again, that I'll be short on this, but I just want to make sure I put the marker in. We don't have a consistent plan of how the city is going to spend money to promote tourism out of the TOT funds right now. And so we get into these moments where there's all this confusion about this and that. Right now, we're looking at the chamber, and the fact that because of the way this conversation kind of fell together over a year, we didn't promote as much. There's less tourist in town this year. People have noticed it. It's because we don't have a consistent idea, we're going to spend money to get people to come to town. When you look at that with this $3,500, to me, it's clear that extra money goes towards advertising. That's what the city Chamber of Commerce is supposed to do, but the Chamber of Commerce doesn't have the money to do it because they're coming to the council as a separate entity. What I'm saying right now is I believe that the 3,500 should be done, and it should be done not just for the three fishings, it's with the understanding that the extra money will go to promote tourism. And I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Tourism Committee, and I'm saying it as such. I want to support tourism, and I want to spend this money.
Thank you, Bruce. Josh?
I mean, I want to echo a lot of the comments that are made, is that this is something...
We always end with you, and so you always echo. I apologize.
I don't like to repeat a lot of things that are said.
I'm going to start starting with you.
Josh, could you please speak into your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Just bring it also to you.
Thank you.
Anyways, no, I just want to echo the comments of Bruce, Chairman of our Economic and Development Committee, is that these funds were put aside for this, and I think we should see it through.
Okay.
But I do, I do feel strongly that it should be a sustaining program in the coming years because frankly, we're going to have a very tight budget coming up, and spending it on fish will be a tough sell for the public.
I still can't, you're not speaking into your microphone, I can't hear what you're saying.
Got to get real close.
I echo everyone's comments, thank you.
Now, now I can hear you. I couldn't hear what you had to say, the fan is right behind you, Josh.
I've got, I've got an idea for a couple of motions. Is that okay? Any objections? Okay. In the interest of building a consensus around the planting of the fish, I move that we allocate $2,400 from the general fund reserves to plant three batches of fish throughout the next three months.
I second the motion.
Okay, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, thank you.
Councilmember Shanta?
Yes.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Aye.
And Mayor Gray?
Aye. Okay, that passed for nothing, it was unanimous. I'd like to make a second motion, that we allocate $1,100 from the general fund reserves to promote the Big Fish Program for the remainder of this season and create a plan for sustainability of that program.
I second the motion.
Okay. I'll, we'll do another roll call vote. Can we have another roll call vote? Thank you.
Dicker, bro.
I'm sorry?
Councilmember Spurlock?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanta?
No.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Mayor Gray?
Aye. All right. Thank you very much, I don't have any more motions.
Very Solomon-like of you.
Any, okay, I think that resolves this topic at this time?
Gentlemen.
Again, thank you.
To shine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for efforts, guys.
We're going to move on to Item 13B, City Council Meetings. Consider changing from two meetings to one meeting per month. Those guys don't want to weigh in on this topic?
Leaving might have helped to weigh in on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council is being asked to consider and provide direction on reducing council meetings to one per month or keeping the current schedule of two per month. At the... Um, at the last meeting, Councilmember Spurlock asked to have this put on the agenda. There was some research done by myself and Julie as to what the effects of having one per month could be in that if we needed more, we would have to call a special meeting. And I don't know exactly with my limited experience here as, as to how often we would need to have a spe- uh, council meetings. There's obviously been times where we only had one per month, but if we do start to get heavier agendas, creating, having the need to create a special meeting could be an issue in that people may not know when we're gonna, you know, they, they may have doubts as to when they're gonna meet, or they're doing special meetings for, you know, to pass something through. But there are requirements, if you can only do certain things at special meetings, really, I think, to prevent those type of things from happening. So, we have listed here for the special meetings what would be required if a special meeting is requested, and if, if there is a need for a special meeting, it would be the mayor or mayor pro tem who would be the ones to place that special meeting. Uh, I'll, I'll read it verbatim here from the staff report. "The special meeting may be called by the presiding officer of the legislative body, mayor or mayor pro tem, or by a majority of the members of the legislative body after proper delivery or required writ notice," I forgot the government code there. "A special meeting may not be called regarding salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive. However, a special meeting may be called to discuss a local agency's budget. Ordinances may only be passed at a regular meeting or at an adjourned regular meeting except for urgency ordinances. Ordinances may not be passed at a special meeting." There's a government code for that as well. So, it, I, I don't think those are the types of things that would, uh, be that urgent to bring at a special meeting. I think they could be covered at a regular meeting, but there, if we start to see that there is a need for a lot of special meetings to be called, it could become, you know, more complicated. So, that's the research that was done by staff, and turn it over to the council.
I have a question. Um, as part of the, did we get any analysis of what it costs the city to...
Do we have any, yeah, public comment?
We, I'm asking a question, a clarifying question first. As part of your research, did you, um, do anything to allocate or assess the costs of a city council meeting? I think one of the reasons was to save money, staff time, that sort of thing.
Mostly, I wanna say mostly time, which could translate into money.
It always does, yes.
Uh, for myself, there was not a study done.
Okay.
But I can tell you for myself, being salaried, it, it does not affect that. Julie, um, are we paying overtime for you?
Generally, I can complete the agenda and the publishing during most hours.
Okay.
But, but, but the time that you're here at a meeting?
Is overtime.
Is overtime, okay. I think that answers the question.
Tomorrow? That's part of the contract? Is that covered under the contract or overtime hours?
It, it would be a part of my shift and fit cells, will during shift time, that would include in there. Um, tonight, for example, it's not, it's, comes out of the straight overtime segment.
Another, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me ask Julie, Julie, are you not fulfilling the function of Deputy City Clerk?
I am.
Right.
But that's based upon overtime hours.
Yes.
What I can during my regular shift.
No, I, I realize that, but that's the function that you are fulfilling right now is the fact that we went to a pointed position as the Deputy City Clerk, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And there may also be cost savings for having the production of the, the city council meetings as well.
Right. Um, and I'm wondering if, I'm just trying to understand the differences of, uh, I'm, I'm wondering about the, the feasibility of being able to either get that video production at a special meeting, um, and assuming a special meeting happens with shorter notice period, right? Twenty-four hours? And being able to consistently get law enforcement representative on a shorter notice, that kind of thing. Versus perhaps the other scenario of keeping two meetings a month as our regularly scheduled programming, but making, not a habit hopefully, but occasionally just canceling a meeting due to lack of agenda preparation. It seems to me in that scenario, with proper notice, we could cancel the obligations of people, but, but not necessarily. It would be easier than having to get them, right? Does that make sense?
It would be, yes.
Okay. Okay, that, that's all my questions for now, before we have public comment on the item. Okay, we'll open the podium for public comment. Anybody have any comments on one or two meetings per month?
This being my first meeting, um, all I can say is that the grand experiment of self-governance is wonderful, and it's intended to be slow, so a good deliberation is very important. Uh, I found just in my one little, you know, wish list, um, that if there was the early meeting in July, I could have been here to present that, and then it could be perhaps voted on tonight. And so, um, the process is meant to be slow, but this, I believe, would slow it down much more, and I think that would be a dead ruck to my fellow citizens who we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will said.
All right, if that's all the public comment we'll have, we'll turn it back over to the council. If it's okay.
I'm again, I'm again, I'm again changing.
You're again changing, okay. Thank you for stating your position. Marty?
I'm not in favor of changing it. I think the citizenry, you know, knows ahead of time, a year ahead of time, all the city council meetings. I think Mark has been exceptionally well, that he, um, if he doesn't believe that staff has had time to put together something on the agenda, he usually sends out an email to all of us to find out if we have any objections, and I really like, you know, that method. Uh, we are now at eight o'clock, we started the meeting at six, and there was hardly anything on the agenda. If we cut it down to once a month, I can see that we would be here until midnight. I'm not in favor of, you know, loading everything up into, you know, one meeting a month, um, even though sometimes it pains me to come. I think I would like to continue with the two, and the way that Mark has been handling it, if there's not enough, gives enough notification, then we just cancel it.
Thank you. Josh, any thoughts?
Well, I mean, this was strictly, I, I introduced it just as a conversation piece because I saw that...
Speaking to the mic. Thank you.
I, I, like I said, I, I just thought that this would be a good conversation to have because there may be some time and money savings in there, and money is the big topic of most of our city council meetings lately, and so I'm happy that we're having this conversation, and I appreciate it. Uh, and some good, good points were brought up by our audience member and Marty as well, so I appreciate that. I, I am more in favor of one meeting, so I'm biased towards that, but I think no matter what happens, it's in the best interest of two meetings or one meeting, so, yeah, that's all I have.
Um, what's your name again?
Reverend Bob.
Reverend Bob. Just wanted him to go on the record as Reverend Bob, not just audience member. Thank you, thank you Reverend Bob.
I, I know Bob.
Um, I, uh, wanna say I concur with Marty. I think that was a, a very accurate and well-put assessment of my feelings as well in terms of, um, Mark does a really good job of assessing whether or not we have enough to have a meeting and whether that would be valuable.
I'm gonna go on the record and say I agree with that, too.
Yeah. Um, one, one question about that. So, we talked, we, we looked at what it takes for, to call a special meeting. What is the, the appropriate process to cancel a regularly scheduled meeting?
Uh, probably needs some help from Julie because she's by ever right hand. Um, do, can you answer that?
Generally, we try and give twenty-four, forty-eight hours notice. Um, we do have a list of those notifications that we make, which is in newspapers in the area. Giovanni gets a full packet, and any other emails to the council, obviously, and any other person. So, we keep that information...
But, but who makes the call?
The city manager.
Okay. And so, and it seems to me if, if we're, if we're thinking that, you know, obviously if we don't have a quorum, we try to, we try to understand that twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours ahead of time, or for some or other reason, a meeting is gonna get canceled. That, that makes all the sense in the world. We do have, um, the creation of the agenda usually the Friday before, so if, if we're considering canceling a meeting for lack of agenda items, it would actually happen well before, like the Friday before.
Right, and we're, we're required to have it by six P.M. on Monday.
Right.
So, that's why I say twenty-four, forty-eight hours prior to the actual calendar.
Right. Um, anyhow, I, I think it's easier to cancel a regular meeting, so I, I'm in favor of keeping the two meetings a month, which, so therefore we would require no, no motions or anything, other than if we wanted to codify that position. But, uh, it sounds like everyone, maybe with a little skepticism from Josh, is in favor of keeping two meetings a month and just continuing to work through the process with Mark to help us develop the agendas, and if we're a little light on the agendas, um, then maybe we have a meeting, maybe we don't. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Yes?
Do we have to act on this?
No.
Yeah, no, no motions needed since we're just continuing the status quo, but, um, yeah, I think we have a good, if we have good minute-taking, then we'll capture the understanding. Moving on to item thirteen C, authorize mayor, that's me, to sign letters to representatives opposing SB six forty-nine.
Okay, uh, the city council is being asked to consider opposition of Senate Bill six forty-nine, small cells by right installation, and authorize a mayor to sign a letter of opposition addressed to our district representatives. And at, uh, at the Lola Dinner that we had over, I think it was last week, uh, we had the League of California Cities Representative there to talk about this in specifics. Um, it's one of these bills that it seems to be steamrolling through the legislative process, so it seems to be having a lot of support, and the fact that cities haven't really sent in letters of oppositions are being used as a de facto, they must be for it if they're not sending letters against it. And what this bill is proposing is to really take away a city's or municipality's right to have land use authorization. In the, currently, if somebody wants to place a cell tower within the city, they would go through the planning department, they would have site locations, there would be zoning issues that would have to be addressed, uh, there'd be health issues that would have to be addressed as well as far as, uh, the local people within a radius. As it is being, uh, presented currently, this is something that we would not have any kind of legislative right to stop these, these cell, these small cell sites from being installed. They could be hung on telephone wires right out front of your house, they could be put on anything that's in the public right-of-way, that is of public owned. Uh, the, the city who is the public, who has authority over it, would not have the ability to stop them from putting it in. And also currently, uh, we would negotiate with the provider who wants to install these, that would be, uh, as far as the price that would be asked to have those in place right-of-way, that would be taken away to the extent that the maximum that we would be able to request would be two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not sure if that's a month, or a year, or how that works, but they have a cap on it. So, it's really taking, uh, something that I believe should be within the local jurisdictions on how they want their city to look, uh, the health concerns, the aesthetic, so the aesthetics, and, and have the public to be able to come in and express those concerns as well. With this bill, it takes it out. We would not have any kind of authority.
Thank you, Mark. Um, one question, without tipping my hand too much, I'm super opposed to this bill. But, in the interest of trying to understand why it's steamrolling through the Congress, the cynical part of me says, well, because the telecom companies have a lot of lobbyists in Sacramento, and that's why it's steamrolling through and has bipartisan support. But, is there any other reason why this is a good idea for anybody but AT&amp;T and Verizon that you can think of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I can think of something.
Okay.
Well, just the idea, like in our town right now, for instance, there's so many areas that aren't well-served by anybody.
Right.
Or badly served by one or two.
Right.
Um, if, if we were to let them come in and, and put these small transceivers, it would help us as citizens with better coverage, so there is another option.
Right, so that, that is the reason why we, we, as a society, are putting, at least in this, in their minds, right, an emphasis on connectivity and, um, and prioritizing that coverage, and this would allow the telecoms to provide that. Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
But, that's not what the letter says.
Oh, of course not. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just trying to, trying to understand if there was any reason why we should rethink opposing this.
And, uh, to, uh, go back to what was said by the League of California Cities Representative at the Lola Dinner, um, one of the things that they were concerned about was for small communities like Dunsmere, that this would not put any kind of priority funding to emphasize bringing those services to smaller communities who are the ones that would most likely need it. So, it would continue status quo where they would focus it most likely in the larger, uh, larger areas, because that's where the money's at, um, and those types of things probably aren't that noticeable out there on top of a skyscraper. Where out here, it could be right in front of your house. So, it would most likely, without the, any kind of incentive to bring it to the rural communities, would still be a long ways from reaching here.
Thank you, Mark. We'll open the podium for public comment on this item. Any public comment?
Excuse me.
Yeah? All right?
He's performing his civic duty.
That's right.
Well, using my letter to the editor as a springboard, um, uh, against big government, big pharma, big telephone, big, 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 taking the right of the people away from them, uh, is one of their favorite poise, and, uh, this, this can't happen. We must stand up for our God-given rights, um, and, uh, it's a good thing I'm not running for anything. Um, it's very important that we, the people, have our rights granted through natural law and, uh, the Constitution to, to stand up and say our piece and not be muzzled by anybody with initials in their name or, um, uh, or the rest of big government. And so, I have to tell you, I really enjoyed this meeting tonight, and, uh, having been in, uh, um, different councils and directorates and sorts of things, and, um, uh, I see you all as very sincere, honest people, and I appreciate that, and that just makes me love my town even more.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. All right, um, back to the council here, close the podium for public comment, uh, if it's okay. I, I think that we should move to send this letter of opposition for all the reasons that have been cited already, um...
I'd like to second that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a formal motion, but I do wanna say, you know, as it relates to, and, and we know we're late here, but, um, I think that, with all due respect, it's not necessarily a constitutional issue because the other elected representatives are choosing to make this law, um, but they're choosing to make a law that removes, uh, an important piece of local control with regard to, um, our ability to, you know, it doesn't get any more local than what's outside your, your bedroom window. And so, um, it, in, in my view, this isn't, this isn't really an example of big government, And so, in my view, this isn't, this isn't really an example of big government, but more of the problem of big telecom companies and the influence they have on our government. So, some degree that's reflected in the letter, but mostly it's about what is most important, which is the local control issue. So I'm in favor of the letter. Bruce?
Let's say, I'm opposed to the bill because it's a bad bill. I'm supportive of the idea of more connectivity and coverage, obviously, but it's a bad bill in my mind, both because of the fact that it takes away our local control, but also because it doesn't deal with rural communities and what they really need to be brought into the modern world.
Thank you, Bruce.
The one small amendment I'd like to make is maybe on this, say, the city council of Duncemere opposes it, unless this is something you personally want to add up as the mayor.
Generally, the mayor signs the letter, but I'm happy for it to say the city, the city council. But then we'd all have to sign it, right? Can I say the mayor on behalf of the city council?
Maybe we just, maybe we just leave it as the mayor.
You can also put unanimously by the city council of...
Okay.
I think we might have a unanimous vote here.
With those, with those understandings as part of the amended motion, is there a second? To the amended motion.
I'll second.
You, you help me amend the motion. Can we have another second?
Second it.
Mari? All in favor of sending this letter with the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our agendized items tonight. Now's the time when any of the city councilors can ask for another item to be put on a future agenda. Does anybody have any ideas?
Josh has one. And he has...
Okay, let's begin with Josh.
There was an item that was discussed earlier on the political forum, that I think had some merit to the city, and that was taxation on short-term vacation rentals, specifically through VRBO and Airbnb. And we'd like to possibly explore the option of taxation and regulation of that in the future. That's something I spoke briefly with Mari about, and we'd like to discuss it in the upcoming city council agenda.
I don't have any opposition to that. I will say that I was recently on the Airbnb TOT page, in their Terms of Service, trying to understand more about this issue myself several, several weeks ago, but my understanding is none of those are exempt from TOT. So I, whether it's the property owner or Airbnb who's going to do the collection of that, there's different ways of going about it, but there is no exemption, and so my question is, are we...
I don't think we're trying to exempt that.
No, 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 no. I'm saying that, are we trying to explore whether or not those people should be paying, or how the city is collecting? Because there is no debate about whether they should be paying.
Paying.
They should be paying.
Yes.
So we don't need to discuss that?
No.
So...
Well, we want to put that in the motion to make sure that we can collect on that.
Okay.
There's also the idea that I was told that when a city like us, it becomes known that we don't have any ordinances against buying property and turning it into, right away, just an Airbnb, that that tends to be where it gets out, and a bunch of people will come in and grab up property and turn it into Airbnb, and with the idea in mind, especially that they don't have to pay TOT, because the city isn't bothered to do it.
That's very interesting. Would you be willing to get some, it sounds like you're alluding to the idea that there might be ordinances that other cities do...
Yes, oh yeah.
That somehow guard against that?
Monchiasta has done that, and what they basically did to solve that particular problem was to have an ordinance that if a building was going to be used completely for Airbnb and not as a residence with a separate room or whatever, in that case, it had to be within the city, it had to be within the city, couldn't be within the city.
It had to be within the city ordinance. It had to be in the commercial area.
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. Would you be willing to gather some sample ordinances?
I will.
As part of this idea, whether that's part of our agenda or not?
I'd love to.
Thank you. Mari?
This all came about by a post that Dylan Lennon put, and it was really quite interesting, and it happened in Montana and Colorado, and, you know, it shows some examples, too, and is to, what is happening in small mountain cities is that the locals are being pushed out of any rental possibilities because of that area. And the conversation, you know, went on further, I have already talked to Mark about it, and I was really surprised when I did a search on both sides, the Airbnb and the V...
VRBO.
Yeah, I have a neighbor right across the street. There's been a stranger living there for a few days, you know, she's listed. And then just in my search alone, there are 12 registered in the city limits of Duncemere not counting hotels. I thought that that was a rather high number. And my question to Mark was, and his suggestion is that we would have to have an audit, to see if they really are paying their, you know, I was surprised by the numbers of just the small search that I did. So I'd like to have, you know, put it on the agenda to, you know, explore this further.
Thank you. And we're moving into the dangerous territory of actually debating and deliberating the issue, so let's, let's move on and say, I'm fine with us putting this on the agenda for further discussion.
Sure.
Okay, anybody opposed?
No, no voters.
Okay. Do you understand the direction? Thank you. Bruce?
We have a new president and superintendent of the College of the Siskiess. I'm on the foundation board, I got a chance to meet with him this week. And so I'd like to, as we did with the past superintendent, Scotty Thomason, I'd like to invite him, I've already talked to him about coming and talking to the council about the college and introducing himself, and at the same time, he would also want, he wants to go to each of the different communities and have a follow-up meeting, not just him talking and say hello, but a follow-up meeting where he gathers the community and asks how the college is serving them, how they'd like to better. So I'd like to work towards doing that and getting that on the agenda also.
And inviting him to come give a presentation to the council would be a way of help promoting the larger community then as well?
Exactly, exactly, yeah. And then secondly...
It's okay, let's just do one at a time. Any opposition to...
Yeah, I really have an objection, because it's not anything that the city council can really do about. We've now had at least two presentations from the College of the Siskiess. I think it's better suited, you know, for the community, you know, to get involved in, you know, the high school. I'm just really, I look at the amount of time that we spend here, and I, even though I think they're beneficial, I'm all for, you know, I've taken classes at the College of Siskiess, I would like to not have these presentations at the city council level, that we really have nothing that we could add, act on, you know, I think those presentations should be at, you know, the high school, a community event level, you know, introduce the new president, but no, I just really object to have it at a city council meeting.
Thank you.
I disagree, obviously.
Obviously? Any thoughts on this, Josh, before we move on?
I see it both ways, I'm fine with either.
Okay. I also disagree, Mari, the city council meetings, in my view, serve many different functions. The primary function is to, and stated purpose is to do the city's business, but I think they can also be a good avenue for public announcements. In fact, we create an agendized item every time for public announcements and reports from the public, and so to invite the occasional person to make a presentation that would benefit our citizens, I think is wholly appropriate of our time at a city council meeting. So I am, I'm fine with it. And for that reason, I'll put it to a vote rather than unanimous...
Well, I'd like to make a comment on that, I'd like to have it limited to the, you know, to the amount of time that the speaker would, you know, five, five minutes, you know, is ample to introduce and, you know, do any presentations.
Fair enough. I think you bring up a good point, that we could at least put an expected time and stick to it for those presentations in the future. But with regard to this specific item and this request, we'll take a vote, move to, or not, we don't have to do a motion, but is there, is there any objection to inviting Mr., what's the guy's name, you guys' name?
Shoemaker.
Shoemaker?
Doctor Steen, Shoemaker.
To give a presentation at a future council meeting?
No opposition.
Are you opposed, Mari?
If it's limited to five minutes, I'm not.
Okay. I think it would be limited in the time to some degree, but if he says I have a seven-minute presentation, are we going to say, don't come? No. I don't think so.
No, but I will object if it's 15-minute presentation, which has...
I understand.
Okay. Direction given?
What I've done in the past for presentations is, and you've probably noticed, is I've really pressured the presenter to keep it to 10 minutes, so that there's time for questions and answers. And they've, they've done a pretty good job in trying to keep it to 10 minutes. The questions and answers may extend it to a longer period of time.
I think that's a fair policy.
I think that's a great policy.
Okay? Okay, we're going to move on. Any other requests for a future agenda item?
I was talking with Charles Anderson at Lola, and he's interested to come and give a talk, just to let everyone know what the League of California Cities is.
Now, Bruce, is this going to be a 15-minute talk?
No.
I'm just kidding.
No, I'm just gonna, I thought we might extend the conversation to him, so he can come and talk to the city, let people, let the audience know that...
You're saying, you're saying Charles Anderson has requested to give a presentation to the city council? Okay. Any objection to extending an invite to Charles? No objection? Can we do that? Thank you.
I would just ask that, Bruce, since you've made contact, that you have them email to work, work on how, what they need to do to get set up for presentation.
I will.
And I would like to stagger them as well.
Sure, definitely.
I just want to bring up a couple of the meeting, items that Bob actually brought up about the Pine Street planters. Do we need an agendized item to talk about this at a future meeting? He specifically asked if we could get the fountain turned back on there on Pine Street, and then also express some concern, or at least he had heard concern about the Belnap fountain continually running. Are these quick answers, or should we have an item about this?
No, I think we should just discuss them quickly.
Okay.
It's, this is more of an operational issue, so I can just handle it from staff level.
Okay.
I don't need direction. The, I believe this is a fountain up there by the pool, by the park, is that the one you're talking about?
No, this is the one in...
The California Theater, and... Forest Home.
Belnap. And Belnap's the fountain right here.
Okay, yeah, this...
Belnap is a drinking fountain.
This one is...
The other is a decorative fountain.
Yes.
There's two fountains, there's two fountains, there's this lower one that's leaking, I think it is, that's on all the time?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a tall one and a lower one?
Yeah.
I think that's right.
I don't know which one is...
Yeah, I think the lower one, that was turned off, we're looking for parts to get that one repaired, so it, the water is un-metered, it just, it's spraying, so it's not causing anything, and it goes right back to Sacramento where we take it from, and it's an issue of getting the parts to fix that. So I know they're researching and trying to get the parts for that. As far as the large fountain, I didn't know, it may be broken as well, so I'll look into it. If it's working, I'll give direction to get it, to get it going, as a priority is allowed.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. I think that is all for me. I do want to reiterate Peter's comment about the River Exchange doing a cleanup day, a really cool opportunity for any students to be involved in some citizen science and cleanup, and that's going to be September 16th. And check the River Exchange website for details there. At this time, I don't have any other agendized items, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any objection?
Boy, I heard you loud and clear on that one.
That's great.
Any objection? All right. Meeting adjourned.